Meeting for this. Start over. Thanks. This is the City of Livingston zoning commission. Monthly meeting on September 13th at 5:37. And I'm calling this meeting. To order. All right. So we have a quorum today, so that's good. I guess we're missing Michael Wood. And that's it. And that's understandable. All right. So on the agenda approval of minutes, we just talked about that. And I think we agreed that we will postpone approving those minutes till next month. So everybody has a chance to. Thank you, Michael, for doing that. Public comments. I don't see anybody on Zoom with us. So I assume there are no public comments. So then we can go to old business. Which is the sign code revisions. That. Matthew had sent out many months ago and that had been tabled. Because of all the zoning map amendments we had to deal with. So that is really our only official business. Oh, hi, Michael. Welcome. Hey. So that is what we are going to talk about today is the. Sign code revisions that Matthew had sent around. And so I think at this point, I'll turn it over to Jim Woodhall. He will read the staff report on those proposed changes.
Actually, Jim, I'm not going to do a staff report yet. I didn't send it out. And I haven't actually reviewed what Matthew wrote, but I will give you the highlights of how we got here. If that's all right.
Yeah, sure.
Basically, this revision to the sign code came at the request of the Historic Preservation Commission. They were having some issues wanting to have more flexibility with. Particularly. The historic projecting and neon type signs that they want to encourage in the downtown. And they were also feeling a little limited with some of the numbers of signs where people have small storefronts. And have separate door signage and a window sign. And they just wanted the flexibility to look at an overall package and how it related to the building. And the district itself and be able to approve things that made sense from a design standpoint to that commission. So most of these changes affect the central business district and the historic district. Some of them are universal, but none of them are. All that earth shattering or really all that big of a deviation from what we've had in the past. So again, I just wanted to be clear that this came at the request of the Historic Preservation Commission. And they spent quite a bit of time, several meetings discussing these revisions. And finally have it in a format that they think is ready for you guys to look at and recommend to the city commission.
Okay. All right. And I think probably also there was a. Certain amount of just reorganization and clarifying the structure of the ordinance to make.
Right. There were some changes and a lot of changes in definitions, just to make sure everybody was on the same page.
Right. All right. Well. As everybody had a chance to look through the document that Jim sent out a week ago. They got three nods. That's most of us. We have three now. We've got four and a half nods that we've all looked at. Okay. And so at this point, does anybody have any questions? Or clarifications or objections to any of the material? Misordance.
Jim, can I clarify? I know you and I talked earlier before everybody else was on, but. This has not been advertised for final. Vote this evening. So this is a work session to answer questions and. Make revisions to the revisions presented to you. And we will need to schedule a formal public hearing at a future date.
Right. And I expect that would be next month.
It certainly could be. Yes.
Yeah, I think we should. We should do that. So this is sort of informal, just a discussion of whether what is what laid out in this ordinance makes sense. So does anybody? Have any questions or objections or suggestions? You wouldn't.
I was curious about it. I recall Matthew had mentioned. Animated signs were only supposed to. Kind of shuffle through time and temperature. But I didn't see that in this.
I recall that too. And I have not seen that in here.
What does that mean? Can you explain?
Well, there is a type of sign that, you know, with LED lights. You can make a sign as big as a billboard and you can animate it. You can have pictures on it. You can have cartoons on it. You can have any kind of advertising you want to. And they're very big and bright and dynamic. And. The intent, I think, was to not allow those within the city of Livingston. That they wouldn't be appropriate for the town. But we would allow time and temperature signs at, for instance, at banks.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, all the banks now currently have those now. So I think that was the intent.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Michael? So is it like, I think what we're talking about, the sign that's at the town pump there on Park Street? That feels like that's one of these animated signs. I know it goes through a lot of things, you know, whether talking about their casino or what have you. It's very bright.
Right. I think that was probably the example that brought up the people's attention. And certainly, I would guess that if we did prohibit that type of sign in Livingston, they would be grandfathered in. Until they ever. Would want to change the sign, take it down, put it in, then they would all under the sign. I think at this point, they will be allowed to.
I also thought Matthew had mentioned that it was already zoned or written that way. If I recall. That those, those particular signs are already not complying.
Probably because of how old it was.
Maybe.
Back then.
Anyways, that's something that I would like to see. I don't think that they do fit the character of Livingston and I'm frightened to see many more of them go up.
Well, rather than spending a bunch of time looking through the ordinance and finding if it's in here. Let's make it just note that to do that, we are not going to approve this ordinance tonight. We just want to have our discussion tonight. And then in a month, we will have a final discussion, a public hearing. And then approve or disapprove. Of the word. Well, thank you, Deborah, for bringing that up. Unless somebody knows the exact location of the. Of that in the ordinance.
It's on the first page in definitions. But I'm not seeing the exception for the time and temperature anywhere.
What are you saying? What? Oh, here's animated signs. Yeah, 1.2. Okay. Okay, prohibited signs, D1. It does say, no animated signs shall be erected in any zoning district. Except time and temperature signs that may be erected in the center of business district only. And existing lighted signs in the downtown. Historic preservation district which flash chase, move, real, rotate, blink, flicker, or very intensity or color. However, such signs must be turned off when the business is closed.
That, Jim, I think was specifically written for like the, I don't know if it still moves, but the Murray sign used to have chasing lights.
Around.
The Martin's Cafe, the Beanery now, that whole sign wobbled and rotated at the top. And I think they were trying to make sure that those remained grandfathered.
I don't mind if the neon signs do it. I just don't like the.
Well, let's put that on. Our to do list. Jim, I'll be in contact with you in the next week or so. It may be that we have to add a little bit of more explicit language. Is everybody in agreement? On those issues that we would be willing to allow. Kind of rotating lights on neon signs. In the historic district, but that we do not want. We do not want. Signs of flash chase, move, rotate, revolve, flicker, or very intensity or color. So are we? Kind of in the agreement about that, that that's the direction we want to go?
Sorry. So we want them, we allow them to. Move, but not flicker?
Well, we have to figure out the right wording. We would, we would be happy to preserve like the movie theater signs, the Murray Hotel signs. The Beanery signs and would allow. Similar sort of historic signs of that nature.
But we. We, we should just kick it to those guys. Leave this the way it is.
Kick it to what guys?
The downtown historical. Those guys have to approve just about any change that happens down there in the downtown.
Yeah, but they're working off this document.
Right. And this document has that no, no sign should be allowed of, of any animated type, which I like. But if they choose to grandfather somebody in. I mean, they gotta then come to us and say, we need a variance maybe, but. Yeah, that's the worst.
Well, they would, those existing signs would be grandfathered in now. The only time an issue would come up was if some, another business would want to make a similar type of sign. And how, how to handle that.
It's signs like that town pump casino sign that, that do, they, they're, they're kind of annoying. I mean, there isn't a lot of residents around that particular. Location, but.
Yeah, I think. That's what I was asking is in terms of our intent. What do we hope to allow and what do we want to prohibit?
Yeah, it's just. Too bad they weren't denied that sign in the first place.
Yeah, well.
Can we prohibit it within city limits and not just the central business district?
Well, it says no animated signs. Shall be.
It is every zone.
It is every zone.
Okay, good.
Okay. Well. I think this paragraph is a little confusing to me. I've read it a couple of times. I may, I may want to just. Propose a little bit of language change to make, make the intent a little more clear. Is that agreeable? And we'll, we'll bring it forward to all of you next month.
I just added that on our future agenda items for language on this.
Thank you.
What's the penalty for breaking the, I guess, any ordinance? Is that clearly stated as well?
It is at the very end of the zoning chapter. It's standard misdemeanor stuff for the state of Montana. I think it's $300, six months in jail or both. If it goes that far.
Okay.
There's a story, I think that. What's the hotel just before, the old hotel kind of just before the freeway? The. Gateway Inn.
Pioneer Lodge is what it used to be, I think.
Yeah, they removed, they rebuilt their sign, put it up. At some point, and at the point they did that, it violated the sign ordinance. They had to take it down again. For sure. It was just a height requirement. You know, the McDonald's sign out there and the Exxon sign out past the freeway. Do not, our grandfathered in there.
Yeah, those, those signs actually have variances from the 90s.
Did you?
Yep.
So they weren't just grandfathered in, they were allowed to do that. Okay.
Correct. They were, they were actually granted variances before the fact.
Okay. But that's the intent. In places like that, there's a 30 foot height limit on any sign in town. All right. Well, is there any other issues that people have? And certainly you can bring, you know, any, any new thoughts back next month, but is there any more issues now that? You've noticed that you want to talk about? Well, in that case. I do have one question. And maybe I'm just not reading this in, in E. No, excuse me, F2D. It says, signs in residential districts, no signs may be erected or placed closer than five feet to the lot line adjacent to the street. So I know in residential areas, you've got a boulevard, then you've got a sidewalk, and then the lot line starts. And we typically have real estate signs and we sometimes have political signs. That, that go out on the boulevard. And I'm wondering if that is. Clearly laid out in here.
I believe it is, Jim. I don't think any signage is technically allowed in the boulevard. It'd be under section, whatever section describes prohibited signs.
Michael Wood, like where, where do realtors typically put their signs? Out on the boulevards or?
Oftentimes the boulevard.
I have heard that they're, they're being kind of strict with political signs. They want to keep those back on the property line. And they've, they've asked people in the past to remove. Political signs that were out on the boulevard.
Yes, it isn't as explicit as I remembered under D7. About the only thing I'm finding, no sign erected on any property without the express permission of the occupant, owner, leasing, or authorized agent.
Yeah. Well, that brings up a question then. Do we want to disallow or to allow? Small real estate and political signs on the boulevard or not?
I think the only time that would be an issue for a real estate sign is where you have oftentimes fences and. Shrubs, plants, these kinds of things. You put a sign behind there and no one will see it.
Right.
I think it's. Doesn't, signs really. Aren't a main source of drawing people to a property anyway. It's just more to help a person find the property. It's the owners that get excited when the signs aren't there. The people trying to sell the property, they want to see the sign in their front yard. So. Other than that case, they're. I don't see any problem with. You know, not allowing them in the boulevards. Yeah.
I think it's probably. Visually a little more appealing not to have the, the signs in your face all the time. So.
I put a sign, I had a property list up in Clyde Park and, and then, and then. Sheriff took it because it was too close to the highway.
Oh.
And it was probably 10 feet away from the edge of the road, but he said it was in the right of way. I don't really know. Yeah, okay. No worries.
Well, the boulevard and the sidewalk are technically in the right of way of the city, their city property. So it, there may be some kind of illegal reason why. We would want to prohibit signs from those locations. Well, let's do this then, if everyone is agreeable. Let's clean up that language a little bit to make sure that real estate. All signs are only to be located on private property.
Or more specifically, not in the boulevard.
Well, there's also. Yeah, there's also some areas in town where there is no. There's no develop of the development of the street edge. There's no urban gutter. There's no boulevard. There's no sidewalk. So it's, it's a little bit difficult at some points to know exactly where that is. But. I think if we did say it has to be on private property, that would be clear enough. If there's ever any issue. Is, is that fair? Yeah. All right. Well, we'll work on that.
Okay, quit.
Do we need to have these, do we need to have the wording of these changes? Prepared for the next meeting? Or can we add the wording of these changes at the next meeting?
Well, I think we, I think Jim and I should have something prepared and submitted to you guys a week prior to the meeting. And it should be in the documents that are. Listed when the meeting is noticed to the public. Is that reasonable?
I agree, Jim. We should be able to put some language in there that gets there. And if it needs to be. Tweaked at the, at the meeting where the hearing is, that's fine, but I don't think we should be writing sections at that point.
It's a hard thing to do to write things in a group. When you have a short deadline.
I mean, it may be a multi-step process. If the public. Points out something that needs a radical rewrite at the point of the hearing, then we just postpone it and continue.
He froze. Jim Woodall, you froze up. I don't know if you can hear us, Jim. All right. No, I don't know, Jim, if you need to reboot or. Or what, but you, your screen is frozen up on us. All right. So I guess we will continue with the meeting. And hopefully Jim can catch up with us. Yeah, he dropped out, so he's going to reboot. Um, so the only other thing that is not on the agenda that I wanted to bring up. For us to work on is this whole question of the gateway overlay district. And it's way back when, a couple of years ago, it was kind of on our master list of topics. That we wanted to go through. And we've gone through everything, I think, on that list except for this. And. So I just wanted to get us started again on thinking about it and preparing for. That work. Now, we can't do that obviously tonight. But. So anyhow, that kind of the question is if. What we have for the gateway overlay currently is, is there is a map and it's in the growth policy that. The land eaves a line around the east end, the Highway 10 West, and then the 89 South areas. That are in these gateway overlay areas. And the idea being originally, and this map goes back way before my time. But the idea being is that within those locations. There. There would need to be maybe different processes or different requirements or design specifications. For those areas because they, they, they are sort of special conditions. So. What, what you can do in the meantime till next month, and we will take this up. In earnest is for all of you can look at those maps. One of the issues is, are those maps still current? Livingston has developed and changed a fair amount in the meantime. So does it make sense for us to redraw those lines? In that it's, that in and of itself is, is a. Kind of an onerous. Process. And a part of it is that the city has to mail out notices to all of the. The landowners in the area. So it does get expensive.
I lost all internet connection there for a minute.
Okay, all right. Well, Jim, I was just starting to talk about the gateway overlay district and it was. The same stuff that you and I talked about before the meeting. So I think the components that we need to work on are three. One is the map, which exists, it's in the growth policy. And whether or not that map needs to be rethought in terms of the exact boundaries of that map. Number two is a design review process. So one of the ways a city can sort of control development, specific areas, is they can have a design review process. And so. In that process. If a. New project would go in one of those areas, they would have to submit to the city site plans and building plans and. Whatever we, we thought was required to make an. site plans and building plans and whatever we, we thought was required to make an intelligent review. So there is that process that would have to be spelled out. And then the third main thing is any specific zoning requirements that would be applicable to those areas. And those might be setbacks, they might be height limitations. They might be specific signage. They might be landscaping kinds of question. So that's that's kind of what would be entailed in writing up a, an ordinance that applied to gateway overlays. And it, it, it could be a small thing or it could be a big contentious political thing depending on what we come up with. So I think the thing, kind of big picture need, we need to think about individually in the next month is if you would all look at those maps and, and then maybe go to Google Maps and look down and, and think about what is currently located in each one of those three areas. What the current zoning is in those areas, so what is allowed in those areas? And then think about what we want those areas in terms of new development, what we want those developments to look like and, and how that might affect. So that's just sort of a general background. And you know, we'll have some good discussions about it. I anticipate that we'll have two or three meetings on the matter before we sort of start to get down into the details. Jim, do you have any further, any, anything else you might want to mention?
I would stress that the, the meat and the potatoes of that is, is what specific regulations will apply that are different from the underlying zoning. So if it's, if it's a particular height issue, if it's a signage issue, or like you said, landscaping or whatever, those are the kind of details that we'll have to write into it as we go along.
Right. And I think, you know, basically, the, I think the big question is, those ends of towns are to the extent they're built out now, they've been built out you know, in an area, in an era of car culture, so they're, they're typically, you know, parking lots in the front and buildings to the back end of arrangements. And what the old historic part of town, the historic district and parts of Park Street are, were kind of laid out prior to automobiles, and so the buildings tend to be close to the street and and parking is somewhat limited, but might be put to the rear of buildings. So we've gone through that issue already a bunch, but we want to maybe think, you know, if you think about Highway 89 South. What do we want that to look like? How do we make, how do we want it to function? How do we want it to serve? In the you know, we've got for better or worse, this is a tourist town. We get a lot of new people coming through town. What are the first impressions when people come into town? And I think that's an important issue. And you know, if you drive up from the park into Livingston and that's what's there now, I guess my my reaction is this is like any other sort of highway interchange in the United States. There's nothing particularly appealing to it. There's nothing that would draw people past the interstate into the rest of town. And so we might think about what, you know, how we, how we can make, make it as attractive and appealing and efficient and, and pedestrian friendly as, as we can. You know, it's, it's those areas are here for us and they're here for all our visitors. So anyhow, that's just kind of big picture stuff to think about that, that I've thought about. And I think that's as far as we can maybe take it today. Does anybody have any thoughts or any directions they'd like to see? Let's go.
No, I might echo what you said, Jim. I think this recent PFL proposal for subdivision highlights the need for really thoughtful overlay districts and how those entry points grow in the community. I think they're really important and so, no, I think I agree with most of what you said. I think the figuring out the detail of what that, how to do that so that we prevent the strip malls and the anywhere USA and that type of character and maintain the character that keeps us as a unique vibrant community. That's all.
But as background, what happened out of PFL is when the city annexed that land at the request of PFL, evidently they specifically carved out the gateway overlay line to exclude PFL, so that, so they even though they're in the city and they're zoning out there, we can't, we can't use the gateway overlay currently to, to have any say whatsoever in terms of what, what, what is being built out there. So I appreciate that, Wendy. That's, that's a good example. All right, well, let's that's, I think, hang it up here. Is there any further issues that we might want to put on next month's meeting? We've got the sign ordinance to work on and the gateway overlay. Jim Woodall, I asked you this, but it doesn't look like we've got any zoning issues, any projects to evaluate next month that you know of?
No, not that I'm aware of. That could change rapidly, but I don't see anything on the horizon that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. So that's it. Jim, I think you wanted to talk about the new city planner.
Yes. We have a new planner on board, supposed to start October 1st. Her name is give me a second, Jennifer Seaberson. And she is coming to us via Boulder, Colorado. Grew up in Louisiana. Been in Boulder, I think she said, 13 years. Specializing in pedestrian bicycle transportation projects as well as site plan review, environmental review, drainage, all that kind of stuff. And I believe when we were interviewing her and trying to figure out why she wanted to be in Livingston, Montana, one of her biggest issues was Boulder is a very big local government. She's a cog in a very big machine and they tend to pigeonhole people into the very specialized areas. And it appeals to her to be in a, in a smaller community with, with frankly, fewer employees and the opportunity to work projects from beginning to end in, in all aspects of the, of the planning process. So she was very excited to to be in a more rural, less densely populated area where that's still a possibility.
Okay, Jim, did you find her a house yet?
As far as I know, she has secured housing as of yesterday.
All right. All right, well, good. So first to October. So we'll be seeing her next month. That'll be good to get to know her.
Yeah, she'll be hitting all of the boards as they come up in October.
Okay, good. All right, any further business anyone can think of? Well, with that, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good to see you.
Everyone, good to see you.
Bye bye.
Thanks.